Good evening, folks. This time we'll call the Tuesday, June the 19th, 2012 meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order, and this evening I'll lead us in our invocation. Lord, we come to you this evening, thank you for the opportunity to serve, and thank you for those in the county government who serve us, and we thank you for our citizens who, through their dedication and hard work and sacrifice, supply the resources necessary for us to operate our county government. We pray you a blessing on all of them. We pray you'd be with those in our community who are suffering from illness this evening. We pray you'd be with those from our community who are on foreign soil, offending our freedoms this evening. We pray that you would give us wisdom. We pray that whatever we do would please you, and it would bless the people that we serve. We ask this in the name of our Lord. Amen. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country. Mr. Smith, I understand you have a couple of adjustments of the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have one omission and one addition. The omission is the first public hearing, which is memo number one, and that's the consideration of an economic development incentive. And the addition would be under closed session for property acquisition, and that's a general statute 143-318, 11A, 5.
Okay. Does any member of the board would like to make any adjustments of this agenda? Hearing none, I would move that we adopt this agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll proceed immediately to public hearings, and the first item we have this evening, we'll call the meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to consideration of an economic development incentive, amount of $286,202 for an undisclosed company based on the investment of $18 million in Iredell County. We have Mr. Smith and Mr. Merrick with us this evening. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be with you. We're here tonight to talk to you about support of an existing Iredell County business and try and help them to sustain their operations and move forward. For further discussion on this, I'd like to call forward our Director of Business Retention and Expansion, John Merrick.
Commissioners, Statesville Regional Development comes before you this evening on behalf of a company who wishes its identity be undisclosed at this time. They are requesting an industrial grant as per the Industrial Tax Grant Incentive Program, which the Commissioners had previously approved. This particular company is based in Statesville. They manufacture and service fixtures for the automotive industry. They are planning to add new capital equipment and outfit a current building. They will be adding a new equipment which will replace obsolete equipment which currently has minimum tax value. The company does not expect to create any new jobs as a direct result of this investment, but will retain job which would otherwise be lost to competing facilities and may create opportunities for additional jobs in the future. The building outfit is scheduled to begin in the third quarter of 2012 and finish in the fourth quarter of 2012, with the equipment to be added in the fourth quarter of 2012. This company's request is based on an $18 million investment in capital equipment. More than $1 million of that equipment is going to be purchased from an Iredell County equipment manufacturer. They will also be outsourcing some of their logistics and storage needs to an existing Iredell County company. Again, there are no new jobs, but the overall average wage paid by this company is substantially better than the 3J wage standard of $33,750. The company currently has approximately 150 employees with an average wage of about $45,000 annually. That contributes $8.6 million to the Iredell County economy on an annual basis. The purpose of this investment is to improve productivity and remain competitive with offshore competitors and other facilities within their company. And the amount of the incentive that they are asking for is $286,202 over five years. I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Merrick? Hearing none, is there anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? If you would, please come forward. Okay. At this point, I'll move that we close this public hearing, and the floor is open for discussion or motion. It's your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the $286,202 Economic Development Incentive over a five-year period based on an $18 million investment in Iredell County and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay. A motion for approval comes from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Once again, we'll call the meeting in the public hearing in consideration of the fiscal year 2013 Rural Operating Assistance Program Grant Application through the North Carolina Department of Transportation Public Assistance Division. Mr. Garrison, welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. The purpose of this public hearing is to allow citizens to have input into our proposed FY13 Rural Operating Assistance Program grant application. This is an annual application that we apply for, for operating assistance. The deadline for submitting the application is actually tomorrow, 6:20. I have submitted most of the application except this part of the public hearing. Also required tonight would be the Commissioners' approval to allow the Chairman, the County Manager, and the County Finance Officer to sign a certified statement that acknowledges the intent of the use of the funds and the program requirements for monitoring and reporting of the funds. There are three pots of money in this program, the elderly and disabled, low-income employment, and general public, and the total grant application is for $300,942. The only local match that's involved with any of this money is for our general public. It requires a 10% local match that we obtain through passenger fares. A lot of these funds, we do use these funds to match some of our federal grants for job access and some of our elderly and disabled transportation programs, so it helps us stretch our dollars. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Garrison? Okay. Once again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this program? If you would, please come forward. We declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to administrative matters, and Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Memo number four is a request from our Solid Waste Department and David Lambert, our Director here, for approval of a resolution accepting and endorsing the 2012 Iredell County Solid Waste Management Plan.
Good evening. As Ron said, I'm here to present the 2012 update to Solid Waste Management Plan and ask for an approval of a resolution accepting the plan. This plan is prepared in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 138-309.09A subsection B for the purpose of meeting local solid waste needs and protecting public health and the environment. The area covered by this plan includes Iredell County and the following municipalities: Statesville, Mooresville, Troutman, Harmony, and Love Valley. You'll notice tonight that I'll say "we" a lot, and there's a reason for that. Credit for any progress made or any goals achieved should go to the entire staff at Solid Waste. They've worked harder in some areas, smarter in other areas, and do whatever necessary to get the job done. It takes a team effort from entire department, whether mechanics or operators, site attendants or administrative, recycled enforcement, all doing their job. So that's why I say "we." It's a mission of the Solid Waste Program to provide the county with environmentally responsible waste disposal while optimizing all resources fully. To accomplish this, four primary goals were set several years ago, and I want to tell you what we've done or plan to do to achieve these goals. Goal number one is to provide all citizen businesses in the county with waste disposal capacity, convenient disposal locations, recycling opportunities, and education. Fifty-two acres of additional disposal capacity have been added to the site suitability plan over the past year, but the reality is that it started with this board's vision in purchasing land in 2008. That should provide space for a minimum of 20 years and possibly more. Phase five will be the first portion of this property to be developed, and we expect to receive a permit to construct by September 1st, with construction anticipated to begin in fiscal year 1213. A contract's also been let for construction of White Goods Facility at the Mooresville Transfer Station. We hope to break ground within the next month. This project will add to the efficiency of the White Goods Program as about 50% of the appliance collection comes from the Mooresville area, and this project is financed 100% with the state White Goods Program. To provide better service in all areas, we have an interest in locating a convenience station in or near Troutman, as well as replacing the older station located in Harmony. Doing so will offer equal services to all residents. The second goal is to increase efficiency of solid waste programs, thereby maximize available disposal capacity while ensuring the ability to react to future needs. I would say mission accomplished, but always feel there's more we can do that good enough never is. We've been able to reduce our budget and still operate without reducing services during the economic downturn. As you know, our budgets spike about every five years to allow for new construction. Our past five years' expense budgets have been as follows: 2008, $10.6 million; 2009, $7.6 million; 2010, $6.5 million; 2011, $6.5 million. Current year, it's $8.5 million, but that does include $2.4 million for phase five. Without that, we would've been down to $6.1 million. We've steadily been paying off our debt, as evidenced by the reduction in debt payments. Our last year's debt payment was $1,397,725. Current year is down to $905,594. Next year, we're going to drop down to $437,563. We're getting to the point that we hope to be able to finance all our future projects without borrowing. We've applied for and received $1,142,000 in outright grants or reimbursements for the present and past two and a half years. We constantly review all our programs and operations for ways to become more efficient, whether large or small. For instance, we no longer bring the recyclables from our West Iredell Station to Twin Oaks for baling; instead, we haul it to the GDS plant in Conover for sale. All contracted services have been evaluated; in some cases, savings have been realized through new negotiations. The small project I'm working on right now is requesting permission from NC Dean to conduct a trial project using latex paint in conjunction with PosiShell, that's our alternative daily cover material. Doing so would limit our expense for household hazardous waste collections, as well as decreasing the cost for the alternative daily cover supplies. Goal number three is to increase the per capita recovery rate. The recovery rates steadily increased, indicating citizens and local governments are doing a better job in all areas of reuse and recycling. Back in fiscal year 0102, the recovery rate per capita was 60.17 pounds. By 0708, that had nearly tripled to 189 pounds. In the most recent year that I had full numbers in, fiscal year 1011, over 330 pounds per capita were recovered. The electronic recycling program has been more successful than we anticipated; it's contributed heavily to this increase. Solid Waste Department has also utilized recovered stone, brick, and concrete for road material instead of purchasing quarry stone. More gains are anticipated, as the county will begin a trial program in shingle recycling in the upcoming year, which has the potential to remove an additional 1,500 to 2,000 tons per year. Town of Mooresville's recently started single-stream recycling, and that'll have a good result in boosting recovery rate as well. We've seen a real decrease in disposal rate, and for the first time, the county's not only reached, but exceeded the goals proposed by the very first Solid Waste Management Plan written in 1991. I'd like to take credit for that, but I can't because a lot of it's coming from influence of the poor economy. But there is some progress being made. Some of it's through local companies learning to operate more efficiently; some of it's increased recycling opportunities and infrastructure, such as Benfield Services Recycling Facility in Mooresville. The disposal rate back in '91-'92 was 1.19 tons per person in this county, and that includes everything. That's not just your household waste; that's all the factory waste and the restaurant waste and all those things mixed in. By 0708, that had increased to 1.42 tons, but this year, it was down to 1.11. It's the lowest we've been since we started keeping records on this. Now, as part of this plan, I'm supposed to establish a goal for the next 10-year period based on that baseline year, and so what I've estimated is 5% reduction, which will result in 1.3 tons per capita. The way we hope to accomplish this is through some different things. Statesville's established an unmanned drop-off site for single-stream materials with the purposes of evaluating a single-stream program for the entire city, and they're also considering putting a few more of these little unmanned sites around. Troutman reports that they may begin the collection of glass in the future, and Mooresville's new program has a 70% participation rate, and their goal is to get that up to 80%. As I mentioned before, we'll be starting a shingle recycling program, and that should take place this year. We're doing that with a grant from the state. The county also plans a major upgrade of computer systems and accessory hardware, such as utilization of the cloud, advanced scanners that will eliminate the need for creation and storage of hard copies. In our department, more and more records are being stored electronically. Even this update I'm presenting tonight's just going to be available in electronic version online. Normally, we would print about 50 copies of this. And goal four is to decrease improper disposal while protecting public health and the environment. The department employs one enforcement officer who receives and investigates complaints from the public and other agencies within local government. He answered 275 complaints in 2010, 297 in 2011, and thus far in 2012, reports 113. Number one complaint's been illegal dumping on another person's land, followed by illegal storage of waste in excess of seven days, followed by transportation of uncovered loads. The 684 complaints that he has answered, 404 warnings or citations resulted. Officer Kilpatrick notes that the dumping or littering of roadsides with household waste and tires has declined, but dumping of roofing shingles appears to be on the rise. I hope I've been able to give you a brief snapshot of what the department's goals and plans are and the success we've had in reaching those. We try to apply sound business principles and work together to do our very best for the citizens of the county. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Lambert? The request is for approval of this resolution, accepting and endorsing this plan. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the plan as submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Robertson to approve this plan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is a request from our Animal Control Department, and Tracy Jackson is standing in for Chris Royal tonight for the adoption of a local eligibility rules pertaining to low-cost spay-neuter program.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you know, our animal shelter's been offering a low-cost spay-neuter program for a number of years. Part of the requirements in order for the county to get reimbursed from the state is that we have a formal program in place that has been approved, the eligibility requirements that have been approved by the Board of Commissioners. These requirements have been in place since we started our program, but they have not formally been approved by the boards. That's why we're bringing these to you tonight, and our request is that you approve these rules for low-cost spay-neuter to allow the county to be reimbursed by the state of North Carolina Department of Agriculture.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make motion that we approve the policy for low-income spay-neuter program.
Okay. Motion for approval. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Memo number six is...
There's no county money used for that.
Our Chief Deputy Garland Clower will make the next request for consideration of pyrotechnics applications for July 4th celebrations.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. As you're well aware, the celebration of this great holiday that we have for the birth of this nation, the celebration of its freedom, is fastly approaching. In front of you, you have four applications for annual fireworks application, and by the general statutes listed by the state of North Carolina, the state charges this board to approve these celebrations. And so we have three repeat applications in front of you. The first one we'll talk about is, one comes from the city of Troutman. The city of Troutman, during his 4th of July celebration on June 30th, will be a part of their celebration program. Mr. Hale, which I think you have seen before, has come before, as he's done an excellent job by meeting all the commitments. He is pretty much local from some of the surrounding counties that are here. He plans to put on a fairly good show for the citizens of Troutman and those around. On the same night, which is another repeat show that we have, is another fireworks show that we have listed for the, let me get my papers straight here, excuse me, East Coast Pyrotechnics. East Coast Pyrotechnics at the Lake Norman Yacht Club, which is another repeat group, pretty much on private land. All of these that we've looked at, we've pretty much, we've looked at all the requirements under the general state statutes, the amount of shells that they're firing, their storage. All the safety features have been looked at by our staff and reviewed. In these areas close to the lake, we've actually contacted and got permissions from the Coast Guard to be supportive of these operations, and this is one of the ones that the Coast Guard will be participating in at the end. So those are the two that we have on the 30th. The third one we have is another repeat pyrotechnic show that we have, and this will be done on the 4th of July. This will be down at Queens Landing at 150 at Lake Norman. Again, we have asked the Sheriff's Office and other first responders, including the fire departments, to participate in these activities to ensure the safety of the community. We have also asked the Coast Guard to look at this and participate to help control boaters that may be in that area. So again, these gentlemen, Mr. Matthews has the one at Yacht Club and at Queens Landing. So again, he is a repeat performer for us. The fourth one that we have is a newcomer to our county. Mr. Trump has purchased some property on the southern point of Iredell County. He purchased the old Lake Golf Club, as you're pretty well aware of. This year, he has chosen to come down in to provide a fairly large fireworks performance for the people there on the point. He is new. The crew that he has brought to us has come from New York. They had to come down to Raleigh and take their certification to be able to put that show on in the state of North Carolina. So he has put some effort forward. It's probably going to be the largest show that will be in the county this year. He has met all the requirements that's been set forth. We added one other additional requirement there. We asked the FAA, because of being on the point and his shells are a little bit larger, go a little bit taller, that we notify Charlotte Airport that one night we're going to be firing those shells and make them aware that that show is taking place, in case there's a deviation in flight pattern that may be there. So those are the four that we have for us this year. We had a fifth one that backed out at the last moment, couldn't make the commitments that were there, so they actually backed out, so he's not on the agenda for this evening. Mr. Chairman, I submit these for your consideration and approval.
Mr. Clower, can we approve all four of these with one motion?
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, Mr. Clower? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the pyrotechnics application for the unincorporated areas of Iredell and the town of Troutman.
Okay. Ms. Griffith offers a motion for approval of this request. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Memo number seven is a request from Susan Johnson, our interim Health Director, for approval of the Iredell County Health Department fee schedule and fee policy.
Each year, we're required to bring before this board and our Board of Health our fee policy and our fee schedule. The fee policy and schedule were approved by the Board of Health this past Thursday. You should have in front of you a copy of our fee, our eligibility and fee policy. If you look on page three, item B, I'm not going to read this, but we have a billing group that meets and we make recommendations for changes. And this change was made in an effort to try to collect more revenue from patients in our maternal health clinic during their pregnancy. What we plan to do is give them an estimate of the total cost of providing care to them and then divide it up into payments, as opposed to letting the balance accrue while they are getting prenatal care and end up at the end with a large balance that oftentimes is not paid. On page seven, under service denial, there was just some revision of the wording there just to make it more clear. Do need to point out that there are two exceptions to this service denial clause. Family planning services may not be restricted or denied to any client. And then our dental clinic, in addition to requiring patients to have their accounts up to date with payments, they can not have a balance more than $300 in dental clinic. And then at the bottom of page seven, we are required by Title X to provide a statement to all family planning patients, showing them the cost of their services, how much of a discount they received, and then what their balance would be if they are on the sliding fee scale. If you have any questions about that, before I go to the actual fees...
Any questions?
If I can't get you just to kind of state for the record, you said reproductive services, we don't charge at all. Is that a, if you can, just tell people, is that a county rule or is that a state and federal rule?
It is a Title X rule. We do have fees set for family planning or reproductive services, and we do apply these fees on a sliding fee scale, but Title X will not allow us to deny services for any reason.
And is Title X originated by this board?
It is originated by the federal government under...
Very much.
Okay. Any other questions about the policy?
I guess not. Go ahead and say.
Okay. If you look at the fee schedule... If you look at the fee schedule, on page four is the first change. It's a $3 increase in our administration of single vaccine. If you notice, the code right under it, 90471 EP, it's $18, and we needed to make this 90471 the same. Then, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. On page three...
What's the title of the page?
I'm sorry. It says, "Irondale County Health Department Proposed Fee Schedule for 2012-2013." It looks like this, if that helps. The clinical services, you don't have it?
Don't believe we do. That's all right, go ahead and...
Well, I can tell you, the clinical services division fees, there were only two changes this year. So, what you approved last year is the same, except for these two. One is the addition of a fee for fluoride water testing. This will be done for anyone who requests it. The fee is $15, and this will cover our cost. We can get the kits from the state lab. This will cover our cost to give instructions and then give the results to clients that wish to have that testing done. And that is usually done so that if the water does not have fluoride, we can give a prescription for fluoride drops to children. The other one is a $3 increase in our vaccine administration fee from 15 to $18. And then, that's all for clinical services and dental. Then, for environmental health, they have a fee, an increase. Do you have that? That, you do have that one? Okay. The in-office plan review is currently $25. There's a recommendation that that be increased to 40. David said that they're finding that the amount of time that it takes to research these plans, look everything up, is taking more time than they had originally anticipated, and they felt like an increase was needed to cover the cost. At the bottom of the page, you'll see a non-mandated facility inspection fee. This is to perform inspections for facilities for licensure that may not be mandated. The example he used was for a day counseling center, which is not the same as a residential care center. So, it's not mandated that it's inspected, but for licensure, they require the Health Department to do an inspection. And he said they look at the walls, the ceilings, the floors, any equipment that might be used in food preparation, and handwashing facilities, you know, is there hot water available? And one of the other counties, Guilford County, I believe, has, uses a $200 fee for this to cover the cost.
And that's not from, that's not because of this board, that's because of the licensing agency that...
Right.
...these people are applying for.
That's correct. The one that they had to do recently, they went out and did an inspection, and then they had to write a letter stating that the facility had been inspected and what was found, and were there any recommendations? And they needed that for their licensure. It was not a requirement from our side. And that's all the fee changes that we have for environmental health. And the other division did not have any.
If I can just ask you to do one thing.
Okay.
If it's a new fee, if y'all can, let's keep track of how much it's actually costing us...
Okay.
...to provide the service, and if we can provide the service for less money, we should lower the fee.
Okay.
If you can't, we would adjust it up, but, you know, if that's something where we can go down, we should try to go down.
Any other questions?
Any questions, Mr. Johnson? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Memo number eight is a request from Susan Blumstein in Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number 53.
We've had several property loss claims so far during fiscal year 12. We've had to go ahead and make repairs or purchase replacement equipment, and I'd ask that the board approve this budget amendment, so we can recognize the revenue we've received from those property loss claims, and we won't be faced with the possibility of some departments going over budget in those line items.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumstein? Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 53.
Motion to approve from Ms. Griffith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Memo nine is a request from DSS for approval of Budget Amendment Number 54, and Vette Smith will make that request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, the Department of Social Services has received some additional funds from the special children's adoption of $83,592, and I'm bringing it tonight for your recognition and approval of these funds.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Is it $83,660 or $83,005?
Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 54.
Okay. Motion from Vice Chairman Norman to approve Budget Amendment Number 54 for $83,660. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Memo number 10 is a request from Irondale Stateful Schools, and Dr. Kenny Miller's here to request approval to apply for $418,237 in lottery funds.
Chairman Johnson, members of the board. That's correct. As you know, we are trying to keep our lottery proceeds in the county, if possible. So, what we typically do will front a project, and then we'll get reimbursement for that project, to keep those funds in our fund balance for capital projects. So, what we're asking for is the applications for two of our projects.
Okay. Any questions?
If you draw that money out, you have to spend it. Is that a correct, I mean, you can't draw it out and put it in your...
No, we have already budgeted that money for those projects. So, we're asking for reimbursement, so that money goes back into our fund balance, and then we will, that's the money we use a lot of times for things like the career and technical school expansions.
I mean, would you be allowed, if you did not have a project, or if you had projects and you elected not to do those projects now, could you pull that money out and just put it in your...
No.
...capital reserve fund?
No, it can't just be drawn down. It has to be attached to a request that is budgeted.
Okay. Just wanted to...
Correct.
...get that out, so people understand that you are required to spend that money...
That's correct.
...if you pull it out, and if you leave it in their fund, we never know when the state's going to come and relieve us of the burden of having that money in our name.
That's correct. Unfortunately, we're hearing that Raleigh may be changing the rules again, so that the lottery may be reducing on the capital side, and they may be using it to supplant on the other side.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? The total amount of the budget, excuse me, budget amendment is 418,237?
Yes.
Yeah. Floor is open for a motion.
Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number 55 to appropriate lottery funds to the Irondale Stateful School system.
Okay. Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 55 comes from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Susan Blumstein has the next three items, so I'm going to go ahead and just turn those over to her.
I'm requesting a budget amendment to transfer the balance remaining in the old Parks Reserve Fund to the future Capital Projects Fund that was approved by the board last June. This moves over a total of $700,910.92.
Okay. Any questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 6.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 56 from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is an approval of a contract with Irondale Physician Network for minor medical care for Irondale County employees. We initiated this concept last July 1st with a contract with Irondale Physician Network, where employees can go to one of three sites, it's by appointment, for minor medical care. And the purpose was to not only save costs for our healthcare plan, but also to get the employees back to work a lot quicker. Sometimes, it's difficult to get an appointment with our primary care physicians, and even go into an urgent care, employees may sit and wait for two or three hours, waiting to get a prescription for a sore throat. And our idea is to get employees back on the job as quickly as possible, unless it's something communicable, and we don't want them to return to work anyway. But this has worked very well so far this year. We've saved about $5,500 in employee time, and over $10,000 in employee co-pays, and all the while, saving the amount that the county pays, since we're self-insured, we've been able to achieve about 20, excuse me, about $5,000 in savings there as well. Now, this is a two-year contract. There is an increase in the fee per visit, if it's used at one of the three sites, but we still believe that it is a good deal for the county in saving our employees time and money. Saves the county time, too, in getting them back to work. This does include the PSA tests that are part of the wellness screening for our employees each year, for our male employees, and also our healthcare assessment. There is no increase in those two types of cost, and I request your approval of this contract.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumstein? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is a request to move forward with financing for our information technology services virtualization project. We've presented this to the board, and we presented it as an operating lease, where it was not considered actually a purchase of equipment. But once we got into it and got the quotes from IBM Global Financing, I realized that the imputed interest rate on an operating lease was towards 7%. So, I asked for a quote on a governmental financing for the same term, 59-month term, same equipment, everything's the same, but on the governmental financing, we can save about $51,000 over the 59-month period. And I've requested the board approve this, subject to the county attorney's approval of financing documents, which I'll bring back to you in July. But I didn't want to even spend the time that will be needed to review those financing documents unless the board was comfortable with moving in this direction.
Okay. Any questions?
Pass on kudos to the folks in IT. That's a $51,000 pickup. That's good.
That's right. And if you have any specific questions about the project, Nettie is here.
Any questions? Okay, floor is open for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the project as presented.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is memo number 14, and this is a request for adoption of the fiscal year 2012-2013 Irondale County budget.
Floor is open for discussion, comments, or a motion. Well, I'll say something. On the radio this afternoon on the Rick Baker Show, I said that I wasn't altogether happy with this budget, but I could live with it. And when I say that, folks, that is no reflection upon the work by our staff that's gone into it. What continues to trouble me about this budget, as it has for a number of years, and I've made this comment repeatedly, is we are relying on sales tax revenues to pay for most any expansion in a budget, or any increase in revenue comes from the increase in sales tax revenues. Of the $6 million of the new spending, almost five of it comes from sales tax revenues. Although I'm very thankful to have those sales tax revenues, it is difficult to make long-term plans based upon sales tax revenues. Over the years, a number of people, many people, as a matter of fact, have come to me and said that we should raise the sales tax rather than property tax. But I think the experience in the last economic slowdown indicates the fallacy of such thinking. From the year 2008 to the year 2011, on an annualized basis, we saw a drop in 7, of $7.5 million annually in sales tax revenues. The problem with sales tax revenues, they are highly susceptible to economic downturns. So, if we, at this point, if we were to try to reduce the tax rate and rely merely upon sales tax revenues to do so, and the economy were to turn south again, we would very quickly be in serious financial trouble. What this county, as well as the state, and well as the nation, is seriously in need of is real, true economic growth fueled by real capital investment. If we had real capital investments, you would see personal, commercial, and industrial property tax revenues going up, and that would shortly be followed by an increase in payroll. That is what will alleviate the housing crisis, nothing that the government can do. But absent those economic policies in place, I'm afraid for the next few years, we will continue to increasingly rely on any increases in sales tax revenues, and we will be forced to move very cautiously, as far as making any long-term planning. We still have huge capital projects out in the future. We're nowhere close to addressing the financial requirements of a new jail, but yet we need to do so. But we cannot rely on sales tax revenues to address such matters. I want to thank all of the staff for the... I want to thank all of the staff for their work in regard to this budget. I want to thank my fellow commissioners for their hard work. I want to thank you for their cooperative spirit. I think each one up here realizes what a difficult situation the county finds itself in. But we must always remember, the county finds itself in a difficult situation because the folks who pay the bills find themselves in a difficult situation. And in this process, I don't think at any point in deliberation that escaped the decision-making process of anyone on this Board, and I congratulate them for that. And at this point, I would move for adoption of this budget, ordinance for the 2012-2013 year. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Memo Number 15 is a request for approval of the May 2012 refunds and releases.
Floor's open for motion for approval of the refunds and releases for May 2012.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve comes from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the final administrative matter is a request for approval of the budget and regular minutes of June 5th, 2012.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion for approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions that I'm aware of this evening. We'll move to appointments to boards and commissions. The Farmland Preservation Board, we have three appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate James Dobson, Donnie Johnston, and Jerry Turner.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint these three gentlemen by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fire Tax Board, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Rex Bell.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Bell by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mooresville Planning Board, extraterritorial jurisdiction, we have two appointments. One term for Danny, excuse me. The term for Danny Martin and Mark Brady expires June 30, and both these folks are willing to serve again. Floor's open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Danny Martin and Mark Brady.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint these by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I apologize, I jumped right over the Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees. Please don't tell Mr. Troutman. I was going by my list here and it was juxtaposed a little bit. So the term for Joe Troutman expires June 30. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Mr. Joe Troutman.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Troutman by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now I'm back on schedule. Region F Advisory Committee, we have two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Barbara Berry.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Barbara Berry by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There'll still be one vacancy there. Okay. That brings us to the Carolina Partnership Appointment. Term for Charlton Allen expires June 30. Floor's open for nomination.
Mr. Chairman, I renominate Charlton Allen.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Allen by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Troutman Planning Board, one appointment. Are there any nominations?
Chair, move table this one.
Okay. Motion to table comes from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have 10 appointments. Floor's open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Krista Hyatt, Sally Dellinger, Hannah Ellis, Vicki Dane, Dan Miglin, Don Earnhardt, Brika Sweet, Lee Byers, Candace Feenster, and Jennifer Bingham.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint these folks by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come to our attention? Public comment period. Does anyone here wishes to speak? Yes, sir. You would come to the podium and state your name, please, sir.
My name is Daniel Nitucksky from Mooresville. You saw me run out of the room. I went and talked to Ms. Johnson, the lady from the public health or the county health department. And I asked her what their policy was or how they conduct themselves when they counsel pregnant women that come into their office and what options they give them. And she told me that they are required, because of Title 10, to present all the options, and that includes abortion. So I mentioned to her that we need to get away from the federal control in Title 10, and that means doing without their money. So I would suggest to you folks, if there's anything you can do to allow that to happen, that we should do that. Because right now, we're bound, they are bound at the Health Department to offer that up as an option. If there's any way we can live without that money and still have that department counsel people on reproductive health and services, we need to do that. If anyone disagrees with me on that, I suggest you go and witness an abortion, and it'll change your mind. When you see the parts of a baby's body coming out in pieces, I think it'll change your mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Okay, under new business, I have one item. Once again, I'm proud to say that a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to Iredale County by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. And that award has been given to Ms. Susan Blumstein, our finance director. So Ms. Blumstein, thank you again for your hard work, and we appreciate what you do for us. Thank you. Okay. Any other new business? County managers report.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. I move we go into closed session in regards to Personnel, General Statute 143-318-11A6. That's personnel. And 143-318-11A5 for property acquisition. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
There'll be a result as... the way of action, excuse me, is a result of our closed session. At this point I'd offer to approve Budget Amendment Number 57 to transfer $59,000 from contingency in this year's budget prior to the ending of the 11-12 budget and transfer that $59,000 from contingency to buildings and building improvements. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. If I make a motion we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?